Here we go.
Yeah.
February 3rd, 2020 school board meeting, 5:31. Please do.
Communities to the flag of the United States of America. In the country of our own nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
How about comment at this time? Let's skip down to January 14th, 2020 minutes. We'll start moving on that.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes for January 14th, 2020.
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Both standing? On to superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm only going to mention a couple of the items here. There's just a reminder to record at the legislative roundtable this Friday and the safety and security task force on March 3rd. There's a note in here about the work we've been doing with Bill Rebus around educator evaluation, which is wrapping up. I think the most important part of that work occurred over the last month and a half when we actually did observations in classrooms with Bill as teams and then worked together to be able to discuss combinations and recommendations and parrot and feedback to teachers. We have a final session with him on March 4th and actually David and I will be talking with him tomorrow about how we continue the work after he's done working with us. A reminder here that March is when we bring you recommendations regarding renewals, teacher renewals for 2021. One thing I just want to remind you of in here that in addition to the performance-based pieces of that out of evaluation, we also pay close attention to where people are in working on licensure. That is, we have a number of people here on alternative plans. They have to make progress on those plans or we can't recommend bringing them back. And so that, some of that will be part of those discussions as well. And the last piece is that last week we created a collective bargaining agreement video for the CESP agreement. Dr. Eric Killian was the moderator on that. Mr. Rabbado participated, there's a number of other people who were mentioned here that participated in that. The one I want to thank the most is Aaron Dowd, who's a Winnetka High School junior who served as the director and facilitator of that work. He's actually putting together the video. And that recording will now be distributed to local cable access, social media, including Facebook and Twitter and throughout all of our websites as soon as we get the final version back in an effort to educate the public about what is and isn't in that CESP agreement. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just one. So for the teachers, when you're going back for the continuation piece?
Yes.
You mentioned that some are on the alternative, but a regular teacher that isn't an alternative, do they still have to maintain a certain certification, maintain classes to do? Does that mean, you kind of, when you've done, you talked about the one, but what about the other?
Yes, so it's both. So I'll talk about, I'll just reiterate the one and then ask David to say what about the other. So what I was talking about are mainly people who are not licensed appropriately coming in, but they have experiences that allow them to go on an alt plan. They have to do certain things to make progress on that alt plan to get their license over a one or two or whatever number of year period. If they aren't making progress on that, we can't keep them.
Okay.
In terms of everyone else who are on three-year plans, if you want to.
Right. So last year we just approved a professional development plan, which in part talked about certification cycle for our certified teachers. Long story short, our teachers are on a three-year cycle in which they have to maintain a portfolio or hours enough to document professional development that will continue their certification in the future. So this year at the end of the school year, we will have roughly a third of our teachers up for recertification. It's kind of on my shoulders through the frontline platform to make sure that they hit their hours and to make sure that we recommend through the Department of Education for the certification. Any red flags that we have, we'll be transparent with administration definitely.
I guess because we've had a couple of teachers that fall in that category the last couple of years where they had a hard time going to, you know, continuing on because they couldn't do their. And that's why I'm just making sure that we as a board understand that you're looking at both sides and making sure that if there is a problem, we're doing much to can, to make sure they have all the tools they need to go forward with so that we can maintain our, I mean, our teachers are already complex.
Yeah. The truth of the matter is that license, like my license is up this year. So we all own our own license, we're in our own license renewal. But we do an awful lot in terms of assisting them in putting and making sure that things are in the front line and they've documented the number of experiences and the types of experiences that they have to have in order to apply for relicensure.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent.
Sure. Thank you. The written report is in your packet. I just, well, it's been a week and a half since our joint board presentation on competency base. Wanted to make sure I put a rehash in there just with the larger points. The second piece of my report, connection between competency and standards. That reflects the work that specifically we've been doing with the elementary school teachers over the last couple of weeks in which we're taking basically the Common Core, ELA, and math standards, laying them out on the table and assembling them based on the competencies that we've got as an SAU. This is a cross-district effort, so we're all in a big room and tremendously effective. And we've gotten good feedback and they've actually been very productive as well. So we've got documents written out for K through five, ELA and math. The last piece for me is the PD calendar for 2020. Believe it or not, we're, our head's in spring right now. We're, I wanted to make a nod to the, the social emotional learning coming up, February 11th. Dr. Eric Killian put together a great team for that. And then with respect to QPA's, we've got March 10th and May 6th. And then we're also looking at the 2020, 2021 school year for professional development as well.
Any questions?
Great job.
Thank you. Executive Director of Student Services Report.
Thank you. So that's a good segue into the special emotional learning, professional development day. One more week, we're in the throes of planning. And we'll start the morning with opening remarks to share an overview of what all the districts have been doing. So our team began in July assessing all the activities that have been going on across our districts. So we'll have opening remarks about that to start. And then we have Scarlett Lewis, the founder of the Jesse Lewis Choose Love Movement, who's going to speak to everyone across our SAU, including EAs for the first time. And then also Carrie Plummer, who's the Assistant Commissioner of New Hampshire Department of Safety, will provide some remarks at the end of that session. And staff will stay with us for, for the whole day for activities and other guest speakers and a closing, closing presentation.
Do you have any questions? Director of Special Services Report.
I think she's, her report is combined with principals this month, right?
Yep. SES principal report.
All right. So we had the last two weeks, we had a couple of kind of unforeseen things. And so we just wanted to thank Terry Brad, Peter Moore, Sean Keaton and Dan Hoit for all their hard work during the week of 119 to 125. As you know, we had the music room construction project, but we also had some electrical issues related to stuff in town. And we threw off our heating system because of that. So there's a lot of things that they had a trouble shoot and I don't think, they didn't skip a beat and the students just kept plugging along. So kudos to them for all their extra hours and really following up and, you know, Terry with pictures and everything. We were in the loop on everything throughout the whole process. So they did a great job and everybody kind of pitching in to help around them too. And to Katrina O'Brien for her flexibility during that construction. And the PTO for holding another successful fundraiser, the Harlem Wizards. Great job with that. And looking at the events for this month. Nothing really out of the ordinary there, to make that in front of you. For academic and programs, we have, we have the teacher representatives, like Dave said, that we're going to the curriculum meetings and talking through some of the curriculum decisions we need to make and also how that translates to the report cards and what the language will play on the report cards. So it was great. We originally had started out with a K through two representative. And then it quickly turned into a K, a one and a two representative. People stepped in for, we opened up beyond to make sure that they could get their work done and to the uniqueness of each grade level, but also as a combined effort too. And for special education, Anna has wanted me to add just that we had two educational assistants that were hired. It was in the final stages of that process, but that goes to the openings that we've had. So today we have a good stamp there. For, we're at 410, professional development, we have our early release. And during that, the educational assistants will be doing the Alice training. Our teachers all completed it by this past Friday and now the educational assistants will complete it on Wednesday. So we'll have everyone trained on that. We're also doing some of the training that we do online for state assessments in the spring and some other curriculum markets follow up to the work that the teachers have been doing, KPA and competency work. That kind of overlaps with the professional development section there. And then of course, as Carolyn and Dave spoke too, about the February 11th, we brought the social emotional learning focus for that day. For community connections, we received another generous donation from O'Brien's General Store. Please keep on buying coffee there, everyone, because a portion of every sale goes towards a fund where the owner of O'Brien's is donating to offset student balances on budgets. And that's been great. So just continuing to do that, we're very appreciative. And the Brooke, the old Dontrae, they are doing a backpack and school supply giveaway this weekend. And we're setting up some flyers on that as for COVID. Any questions?
When the flyers come out?
The flyers might be the last two seconds. It's electronic.
I haven't seen that in paperwork yet, so I was.
Thank you. That's a nice community report.
Thank you. Flyers from home in the middle school newsletter as well. A couple of thank yous. Our unified arts team organized a great pep rally that recognized our athletic teams as well as our interact club and honor society. So the students had a chance to have some fun and recognize some of the great stuff going on. Also, thank you to the social studies team who organized another geography bee, which went very well and the students were excited about. Posted some pictures in here of all of these events. Congratulations in the geography bee, first place, David Johanna. Second place, Sam Merrill. And third place, Nabea Chavry. They did a great job and hopefully will, David will continue and represent our school. I know he'll get to take the test soon and hopefully represent our school at the state level. Very tough though. We also brought in a representative from the New England Poison Control who did a student assembly on vaping to our seventh and eighth graders. It's a great assembly, very eye-opening and gives them a lot of good information. She, that was sponsored by Seco Two Services and they posted her at SYS for a parent event as well, so they could have some information. Just a couple of donations. The Firehouse Center who donated $200 to be used for transportation. The fifth grade went there before the holidays to see a performance. And also the 99 Restaurant who donated monies that were a result of fundraising, fundraising events there. And that money will go towards our eighth grade Washington DC trip. Our upcoming dates in there as well. Our enrollment is about the same. One dollar. So this report.
So Terry has included a maintenance report that covers basic maintenance tasks in the past month as well as a vendor report. I will note that Keena's team did a real fantastic job in addressing the damage to the music room caused by the snow cloud. They were immediately contacting vendors and they, they were able to get the wall repaired, address the asbestos concern, get that cleared, tested and cleared of any concern in record time. So I would like to thank Ben and his team for a really great job. So as well as cleaning the room after construction. Happy to answer any additional questions and we'll go to the.
So it's all put back together, outside's all sealed up? We don't have any other concerns?
It's good to go.
I know it's not with, I don't know where it's placed, but the stuff that got damaged during that, however, the instruments being replaced and, because we don't really have a good place to place our last question.
No, absolutely. So, so our music teacher, along with one of our office floor staff, inventoried all the musical equipment and any other items that were in that room. They could identify the items that were damaged. They are capable in, they are replacing all those items and we will be reimbursed by the vendor for those. So there's no, no cost out of pocket to this.
I was just making sure because I know that we got a lot of stuff going on. It's been concerts coming up, they need those instruments, just how long it's going to take to get those ones back in?
Yeah, there were some that were damaged, but it was less than what it could have been.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
So I've included the fiscal year 2019, 20, year-to-date expenditure and revenue reports. I do want to note the special education costs between the professional services, out of district placements, transportation. We are looking at a budget that's over budget by in excess of $400,000. So we do fully intend to come to the board as we, maybe in the next couple of months, as we get a little closer to the end of the year, to request the withdrawal from the Special Education Spending Trust. Like we have reached that point where, you know, that the balance is overall is in that range. So we do anticipate asking for the withdrawal.
What is the balance we have in these two, the self-temperature?
Yeah, so we.
But normally you put more in your cycle.
Yeah, absolutely. So we are currently at 241. Are there any additional questions?
I mean, I, I guess as a board member, I understand that especially this, this stuff, we've got to pay as much, something in budget for. But I mean, $400,000, what's that going to do next year? I mean, because we already know what that number is this year, so if we carry that forward, I mean, $400,000 behind, sorry, that far. But if we can make that adjustment, right, because, well, we can, because we have to go through sessions to do that, so. So I guess the question is, is do we have to make a decision to identify this issue for next year?
And I understand doing that in low costs and we're in a budget for current students and students that are up for next year. We are increasing our special education budget by $240,000 next year. You know, we're driving students that are graduating on, you know, in the planet to, you recognize savings there. We did budget for all our enrollment costs.
I guess I, I guess my question is, is that really enough? I mean, understanding the fact that we've gone, we've got this, but I guess I'm, I'm really concerned because we're getting $100,000 chunked this year because we have people come in and we have people students leaving in that, that changeover. All does, you know, some pretty good, nice small money. But if we have to make a change, I think right now is the better time to adjudicate that in our budget going forward because we're going to, and just making sure that we're ready for next year and not have to go back and tap the game to our.
Yeah, I, I absolutely understand that. I'm thinking, you know, we need to be, there's a, there's a fine line where we can be fiscally responsible and we, we want a budget for, you know, what we are aware as far as future costs. And that's where the Special Education Spending Trust comes in and why that is so important because that's the safeguard for years like this year is where we will be asking to withdraw this fund. So that's where that commission just comes in, that, that fund is what addresses those kind of, those risks. And so in case that being said, you know, there, you know, there's nothing to say that, you know, we, I mean, they can be $800,000, but we can't, we can't, we can't assume that.
So let me, let me say this, but, great question. So we've spent a lot of time over the last 46 weeks, mainly at the elementary school for right now, talking about assumptions that we make in terms of the way we staff certain things, the way, the way we assign staff, where we think about more preventative measures. And we've talked about some ways of doing some of those things differently that you're going to hear about the coming months, right? We have a lot of work there. Those things have a direct impact on what you're asking for, right? They, they are more preventative measures. It's not that they keep students off of value, it's that they change service delivery patterns. And they sometimes keep students in regular education rather than having high. So I'm with Matt. I think, I think the numbers with the contingencies are probably right as we try to make these kind of changes. Because these, these things are tried and true strategies, but every place I've ever been and other people have worked have had, had impact. And I know, I know they will here too. We're going to have some of that transparency that's going to be a bump for us that we're going to have to deal with. But that's, that tends to be why you try to look more preventative. Than we, than we, yeah.
I mean, the concern is that, you know, we're going to take a big chunk out of our expendable trust that we've been fortunately not having to tap into for the past couple of years. You know, and we're going to try and hopefully our war narc will cover, put money back into it again. But in the ultimate thing, but you know, when you get there and you look at this year and now you're saying $400,000, we came up 150. So it's just, I'm just trying to look forward and say, hey, because right now is a perfect time to make a change.
It is.
You, you two, so that.
But we're sure of our budget. So that's sure, but what's, where's the overall budget?
The overall budget for this current year is, is for even $100,000.
How much is this amount, some interest?
241.
So we don't even have enough money in there to cover. So where, where is the excess money coming from?
Well, we wouldn't be asking for, for $400,000. We'd ask for a small portion of.
But as a budget, but as a budget ended today, you wouldn't have to ask for anything, right? The budget ended today.
And, and I understand that we're doing projections to end of the school year, you know, and that's why I understand this number's going to change. But that number went from 100,000 to 250,000, now up to 400,000. So I keep, I just see that it's like a snowball effect going down the hill.
Yeah.
And yes, we have, we have four months, five months, four months of school left. You know, when did you get done with that? Where do we sit? Are we going to be, are we taking, you know, $200,000 out of expendable trust to make sure we cover it and, you know, go from there? And, you know, if you're looking at it that way, because we've been very fortunate the past couple of years, we've always had enough at the end because of all the other breakdowns we've done, but now.
I mean, the good news is from here on out, many of those things in terms of their impact on this year's budget are small, right? Stacking, out of district replacements, whatever they may be, those things are the bigger ones. Whatever, what you, we are worried about, logically so, is, is the long-term impact of those things if they become more permanent.
So if we pull 200,000, so similar to what the town did, because we put the, the budget up in there for emergencies, right? They were, and they've been pulling $2 million out of the WAC, that, or that tax, tax rate in the town. But now we have $200,000, $248,000 sitting in reserve trust for special education issues, transportation, teaching or services. And if we go and pull that out this year and then I go back and have another $200,000 need for next year, then how, you know, I can't just pull it from somewhere. That means we're going to have a drop in services. And that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, well, and that's why we wait towards the end of the school year is, I don't, I fully anticipate that being, it's going to be lower in number than. I wouldn't even consider 200,000. I'd like to work at 100,000. So I anticipate, you know, we should be really losing shape right into here.
I'm just, I'm just saying, because right now is a perfect time for us to make an adjustment. If, if the administration said, hey, we really think we need to make an adjustment on this because we're going to deliver sessions so we can make a budget. That's why I'm asking this as a more.
When you say that, well, who will?
It's not, but it has.
Transportation tool.
Right, but it's going to, it's going to dwindle down because the numbers will change going through the rest of the year.
So Matt, can I just ask, I'm sorry to interrupt, ma'am. So not that we're talking about individual kids, but you talked about a $200,000 increase for next year. And I, Caroline believes that in the, in the way we look at this particular respect out of district, that encompasses some changes that happen. I'm trying to be really careful here without talking about individual kids. But that encompasses changes that have happened in terms of additional students going out and also accounts for kids who are aging out of this district to another. So we've accounted for it. We're count, what, what we're facing with right now has been accounted for in next year's budget period. Okay?
Yeah.
So even though it sounds like it's only 200,000, you say, well, it's 420. Remember that there's an aging out of population as well. Okay. So it's been accounted for.
Yeah, so that was the savings that was for the graduate students.
Yeah.
No, I, I kind of understand.
Yeah, I know what I know you.
And it's, it's just that I'm trying to make sure that as a school, we don't have to go beg, borrow and steal from something else just to, you know, make a, a budget line. You know, understand the fact that we all look at this every month and we very nitpick out every little one of these pieces to make sure we stay under our budget. But when you start getting in these big numbers, that big number seems like it's going to affect next year. So with our understanding is that kids are going to age out, kids are going to come in. We're going to have that in for what we have covering right now. We've updated, we've increased our budget for next year to make sure we have everything covered, is what I understand.
Yes. For everything I'll be able to add, an active change tomorrow.
Nope, I understand that. And it, and that's the, it is the one thing that does swing quite frequently because it all depends on how those plans often.
Who walks in the door in the morning, punch more than anything else you look at. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Sorry.
Any other questions?
Thank you for letting me talk tonight. I first wanted to thank the administration and every one of the SAU office for their continuous support and help to run a successful nutrition department. I also want to take the time to thank all the faculty for their help in our nutrition department. We are short-staffed, two people. My staff works really hard to continue to run a successful department and a program every single day, but without the help of the faculty volunteering their time. Our program would not be as successful specifically targeting our Thanksgiving meal that we had back in November. I haven't spoken since October, but our Thanksgiving meal, we provide a very big meal to all the students and faculty in our school district. And we had a lot of volunteers, whether they were teachers or assistants, just come down and help during the service time. It was great. The kids absolutely loved seeing the different interaction and everyone had a really fun time. I wanted to, for my report this time, to kind of highlight two of the kids' favorite meals in our department so you can see what the kids look forward to on our menu. One of the meals we offer is chicken and waffles. It's a southern-inspired meal that I've kind of twisted to be, to meet all the USDA regulations still. So it's a baked chicken tender over a whole grain waffle, served with warm maple syrup. The kids absolutely love it. Personally, I'm not a fan of that combination, but the kids love it and naturally all that matters. Personally, I'm not a fan of that combination, but the kids love it and naturally all that matters. Another meal that we have been doing that the kids also really like are walking tacos. I've brought two samples so you guys can understand the concept. So they can choose between Doritos or Tostitos. They are made with whole grains, so they're not the same that you can buy on the supermarket. They're also made with 25% less fat per serving, so they do meet all the regulations. So what the kids do when they come through the line, they can pick which type they want. We open the top of it and then we put all the toppings inside the bag, so it's very clean. The kids love it. There's a lot of variety. They have a lot of different fresh vegetables, different meats, cheeses. And then the kids usually eat it with a fork, but sometimes use it with their hands and it gets kinda messy. But the kids have requested that almost weekly right now. That's not really possible. We're trying to do it monthly, but it's also still really hard for our department because it's a lot of preparation. And lastly, I do wanna thank, we have had a lot of donations so far this year within our department and has really helped a lot of families and a lot of families are really appreciative. They thank me. Specifically, the Rana General Store has helped significantly a lot of families. And we also had some more donations around the holidays, which have been great just to assist as needed. Does anyone have any questions for me? Yeah.
What are we gonna do to get you more bodies?
So I'm hopeful. We have two more applicants, applications. I have been in talks with the HR department to just have it on Indeed. That seems to work once it's like posted more often. Unfortunately, last time we did have an applicant and they just had a better job offer. So that was unfortunate, but we are hopeful. And we have two more applicants that have filled out the application. They do have experience. They seem very eager. So I'm in the works of just scheduling interviews for this week.
Thank you. All right, I guess my last question is, Matt, can you re-explain to me the negative balance line? Because we do have a lot of people making donations towards our food services. And according to her report right now, in January, we're at $27,000 negative.
So those are essentially two balances. The donations are going to our student lunch balances. And the report that Abigail supplied is the, I believe, department's balance. And that includes, if that's, that's loaded with the expenses upfront with a large number of purchases at the beginning of the year. You know, that program has been running at a surplus on that side, the actual program, the last two years, the last few years. So since Abigail's been here, she's, and so I have no concern in regard to that balance.
So in her, sorry, in your report, which is the one that tells me how much we're behind inside food services for kids?
The.
So that, those people that are out there, they may wanna make a donation?
Yeah, so the, the last kind of row, that negative balance is, is the cumulative negative balance that all the kids in our district owe right now.
Well, that's what I just asked for. You just put it in the inventory.
I thought you were referring to the.
No, on, on Abigail's report, the very last one. And that went to January, because January's what we're doing right now. And that's $27,000.
So, so again, I mean, it's, so that's, that's the, that's on paper for the students' balance, which has been, I mean, what was it at its peak?
Yeah.
Probably last month or just twenty nine.
That's the biggest I've seen. So they have been decreasing since then.
Yeah, the actual program has been running at a surplus, which is what the, we're primarily concerned about. And obviously, we're doing everything we can for, as far as to collect that good revenue from the students. But the most important thing is that we are providing a healthy meal for our students and that we're, the overall program is running at a surplus and that's, and we're achieving both of those.
And we still have no kids turned away. They all get fed, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And even when, for example, when the emails do get sent, sent out, some parents will call me without concern. And I assure them probably a couple of times with a 30-second phone call that the students have absolutely no idea what their balance is. We'll always feed them, no questions asked, whatever they want. It's, my staff doesn't even know unless they're running the cash register because it's not important. It's not the kids' fault that they have a negative balance and my staff knows that. And if they want the entree, if they want the alternate, they can have anything. They just can't have the second entree because they still get as much as they want from the salary drive, as long as they need all of my contributions.
Right, so if a child moves on to high school, the balance that they have that's overdue goes with them? Is what I remember from our last conversation? Or does it end when these?
I think it goes to.
What question? What would be the net zero amount you need a month to not increase the, the negative balance? $2,000, $3,000 a month?
Uh, it really depends on the number of days. Right now, the O'Brien donation has been kind of stabilizing it. So it's right around that 2,000, 2,500. It really depends on the number of days. January, we had a lot of days compared to December, which we only had 13 days. But for the most part, it's right around the 2,500 has been the common theme throughout the year so far.
So if that were a goal to maintain that zero net gain, it would be up to the public saying, we're looking for $2,000, $2,500 a month to keep it at that, that stable level? Thanks.
So I mean, does that mean that the annuals, the annuals $25,000? 2,500 a month, you're ten months.
Yeah.
It's $25,000?
A lot of times, like in the first, like August and September, parents tend to kinda give a lot in those months. So like September is probably not the 25,000.
No, I'm just suggesting that over the course of the year-ish, we're talking about 25,000.
That's what it's been so far this year, the, the 2,000. But it hasn't gone up the 25,000 each year. It wasn't, it wasn't zero at the end of last year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any, if you have any questions?
What is SISCO? I see them in there all the time before the meetings and stuff.
Do we have anything for others?
Um, I will just introduce a couple of things in SAS if that's cool. We just had our first family funded engagement event last Friday, which was a great turnout. Ironically enough, we were elementary heavy. We opened it up to elementary and to middle. And what we noticed was our seventh year graders in SAS wanting to be there to volunteer. And it turned into this incredible volunteer event. We had kids coming in today that were, kids that we never see events, to be very honest, that were coming up saying, this was the best experience. We had so much fun. When are we doing it again? And I'm thinking to myself, you guys were better than my staff were. My staff were incredible. I'm not mad at them, but it was pretty awesome to see these kids really jump in there and be part of it. Plus to kind of like introduce SAS a little bit more to elementary, kind of, you know, hit the round the title a little web right there, thinking like, oh my God, to come into this and get great, this is pretty cool. We partnered that event with the Children's Literacy Foundation. And I mention that because there were three things that kinda came into it. First of all, they provided us with a professional storyteller for 45 minutes, which was pretty incredible. They also sent in two books that were free to any kid that was there. So every kid that was there walked away with two brand new, absolutely the hardcover, softcover, whatever they chose as books, which was awesome. In addition to that, they also provided $2,000 for library books that will go right into the library here, including all the binding, all of that stuff. That Sue Harder, our incredible library, made very clear, takes any minute's amount of time. And they worked together and they now have 2,000 of extra dollar books in the library. So it was a great event. It was a great mini-grab and I'm looking forward to giving them a good day.
All right, new business. Skip over to acceptance of gift. O'Brien's, we have a donation from O'Brien's store.
I'll make a motion to accept the O'Brien's donation of $1,901, five zero, month second.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Now, that's a month's time too, right? That's, that's quite impressive.
It's very.
Meet with moderator and legal counsel for a delivery session.
What they guess. No smaller than that.
School board regular meeting will be Tuesday, March 10th, 2020 at 1:30.
Yeah, so here's.
We're changing that.
That, that's right. So we included a note here. Our recommendation is that we move those, that's election day? That we move those to Tuesday, March 17th, 2020. That works for you?
I appreciate it.
Excellent.
I'm actually gonna, I do have a conflict. It's fine if you wanna do it without me, but I'm gonna be in DC for the National Association Conference. And that's the fitting three years.
So we looked at remaining days during the week of the 10th, and the week of the 9th. That's almost impossible to do because a lot of times election results don't get certified until the end of that week. So we really can't go before the 16th.
I mean, if, I'm good with the 7th, if I fulfill every elected, you know, the, they're missing one would be okay, but you got two board seats at this time.
Yes.
It just means if, if you had minutes, you wouldn't be able to vote for him unless you had offered to them. Unless, if, you know, one of us could be elected. That's not, that's personal.
Say that again, Matt, sorry.
For the minutes of this meeting, we have to approve him on the 17th. But if me and Keith do not, either one of us do not make it.
We need to hold it till.
We have to wait till our following meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
This, this meeting.
Yep, that's, good catch. Thank you.
So is it okay if we force, we just leave it as?
That's totally fine with me. You guys wanna work with that.
Just one of those Gary.
I got you.
Well mentioned. So I'll make a motion to change March's meeting to March 17th, 2020 at 4:30 PM.
One second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
And the only comment I'll make on the OC meeting is I sent a note out about, about that because of the lovely scheduling. Certain things have to happen depending on every election and you all are aware of.
Yeah. Joint board meeting, Tuesday, March 24th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Policy committee meeting, Tuesday, March 31st, 2020 at 4:30 PM. And then we have personnel.
So this just got in, so we had put the job description, we've attached it. We didn't get it in there ahead of time, so we don't, we're not gonna ask you to act on it tonight. So we've included the revised job description for that position. Every time that we have an opening, particularly with administrative positions, we go back and take a look at the job description. Dr. Filling has led that. Do you wanna say a word about what's different in this in the last iteration?
You might have to refresh your screen to, to see the attachment if you wanted to see it. But basically, the differences here are, first, the title is Director of Special Services instead of Director of Special Education. It's more of the trend to have it as special services rather than special education because it's on a different education that we're providing students. It's supporting the education that all students are getting. So that's one recommendation that I would make. And then you can see there that I've parsed out the responsibilities. One section of building administrator responsibilities because this role is really meant to be someone who leaves, leaves the schools and the districts alongside the, the other administrators. So as a team and as part of the leadership team in Seabrook. And then also, maybe, maybe in too much detail, but I have listed out the detail of the special education administration responsibilities there for you. So my apologies that it did not get attached before the meeting.
So we'll put that on in the next meeting for approval. If you have questions in the interim, just get them to Dr. Filling or ask him tonight.
So my concern is not getting this thing published out for, uh, published for going forward. I mean, because if you don't do it till after March 17th, because we wanna post this when?
So we've posted, so what we're doing in all the cases where we have administrative positions is we're actually posting the draft. Right? And we're, we're posting the drafts. We've done a principalship in South Hampton, the principalship in North Hampton, two positions at the high school. We've, that, that's what we've been doing and that, that's worked just fine.
But, so if they go to, just for clarification, so we put it out as a draft and if they're out looking for it, they're looking for one of the director positions or, or we're gonna say it. Once you go do that, then you're gonna hand them another, hey, this is the real job description?
Yeah, I don't think it'll be that. I, I don't think in any case, we have, our experience has not been that they've been hugely different. There may be slight tweaks, but, but, but I think it's fine.
Okay.
I have more of a logistic looking thing on here on, under, because every, I've read through this. I actually think it's great except for under special education administration responsibilities. The fourth one down is the same thing as the 12th one down.
Oh, thank you.
So I think you might just have to double up.
Okay.
Thank you. Good, I can take one out.
Yeah, it saves a little space, right?
Thank you.
While we're on the side, if we get the receptionist one posted yet?
Sorry?
If we get the receptionist at the other end posted.
Yeah, it's in the process of being posted.
Again, any questions, like Caroline now and Olivia, March 10th, our apologies.
Thank you.
I see our legal counsel's here, but not the moderator.
Did you finish the meeting, and then recess? We have no need of a non-public?
Okay, then. To recess the meeting now.
I'll make motion to recess the meeting to go to the reception.
All those in favor?
Right.
You'll resume publicly at 9:02 PM. Oh, excuse me, 8:00. Been a long night. All right. So we need to reaffirm our warrant articles, looking for a motion. I believe we can reaffirm them all together if you'd like, one through six or separately.
I'll reaffirm all motions, all articles that discuss the delivery session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, you wanna do session two? Because we gotta make them in the middle of the break. Are the dollars in place? We did one through eight to cover. Actually, it's only one through seven because eight doesn't really count.
Well, I guessed you have.
Hey, then we'll do, I'll make a motion to accept the session two with the modification of two school board members for the, through the three years.
All second.
All those in favor?
Right.
Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.